Okay, today is Tuesday, October 14th, 2025. I call the Village Board to be in order. With a clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Bush.
Here.
Trustee Frankie.
Here.
Trustee Jerish.
Here.
Trustee Laskin.
Here.
Trustee Miller.
Here.
Trustee Schmidt.
Here.
Okay, all board members are present tonight. We have a very special meeting tonight. One, we got our Sister City group and our friends from Sicily and from Mexico here tonight, so we're excited about that. We're gonna be doing some presentations on that. And then, near the end of the meeting, we're gonna have a goodbye to say tonight. So, we'll talk about that a little bit more later. You know, so when you hear the band back there playing Happy Days are here again. It's just coincidence.
You can't help it.
It's already coincidence, buddy.
It's gotta be a whole night of this, isn't it?
Anyways, with that said, we're gonna move on next to the Pledge Allegiance. Then, we're gonna have a very special treat after that. So, all of you, please rise. The flags to my right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please stand, please remain standing. I would have to say, this might be the first time anywhere in the world that we have a band that came from Sicily to play our national anthem, which I think is quite an honor.
That is.
So, maestro, it's all yours. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Please be seated. Thank you. What do you think, Mr. Knickerbocker?
Wow, that's quite an honor.
Was that impressive?
Yeah, it was.
Huh?
I know, I even had to start singing.
That was, I did too. I mean, that was impressive. Thank you again. That was phenomenal, I'm serious.
Did you see the flag on Channel 6?
No, I didn't see the flag.
The flag was over, superimposed.
Oh, is that nice?
They gotta watch it.
I mean, I'm serious. I cannot picture anywhere in this world, a Sicilian band coming to America to play the national anthem for us. That was special. Guys, phenomenal. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Yes.
Nowadays, it's hard to get Americans to play.
Oh, they're gonna get more. Right, they're not leaving. They're staying. Can't go gamble yet, you gotta stay. Okay. We need approval of the minutes of September 23rd, 2025?
So moved.
Oh.
No, no.
Oh, that's right.
Go ahead, Jeff.
I got all excited.
I make a motion that we approve the minutes for September 23rd of 2025. Now you can.
And dispense with the reading.
And dispense with the reading.
Okay.
So moved.
Yeah, motion by trustee Frankie, second by trustee Jerish. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, let the record show and ask approval. Okay. Mayor and Board of Trustees report, so give me a few minutes. We got some things to go through here. And we're gonna do some things with our Sister City group here today. Real quickly, on September 27th, Darryl Pass at Kenneth Young Center had a recovery event. I was there on that Saturday. Did a great job, nice turnout, we appreciate that. On Monday, September 29th, we had our last parade meeting for this year. And remember, next year, our parade's gonna be part of the anniversary year. So, we're looking at some ideas, some things to do special. So, it should be exciting. And I know some people said, get a float for each decade of Elk Grove. We may not do a float for each one, but we may do a couple floats and put multiple decades. Just some ideas. So, if you have ideas, you want for a 70th anniversary parade, please let me know. We're looking for ideas, things to do. It should be exciting. We got a note back from our people that work with State of Illinois. I'm not sure what Springfield's gonna really do. Right now, it looks like scooters, the states are gonna leave, just like each town make their own. They got some statewide things, but they're not looking to make a modification. E-bikes is something they may be working on. So, e-bikes might be what they do. Whatever they do, it might be a ways off. But, we're still hopeful the state takes both under the wings, make a uniform law that we all can abide by, work with, and support here in this village and every other village around. So, we'll see what happens, but that's the latest word we got from Springfield on that. Here's something that was, caught me off guard. Obviously, Mrs. Johnson was nervous about opening it. We got a, it says, "A thank you letter is enclosed to Mayor Johnson." No address, no name on that. But, after opening and looking at it, it turned out to be very nice. Hello, Mayor Craig Johnson. Thank you for the Visa prepaid gift card you sent out in August of 2024. I was able to use mine 19 times, mostly by milk and food. I think I used mine very wisely. What do you think? Thanks again, a resident. I think they did. They actually started, it's funny, 'cause at first, when I saw the first purchase, oh, that's great. They went to the Elk Grove Jewel most times. One time, they went to Target for nineteen, or $18.25. One time, they went to Wooddale Jewel for $5. One time, two times, three times, they went to one in Displanes, $1, $2, $17.25, and $9.18. All the rest, they used the Elk Grove Jewel. So, they use it for something they needed, which is food, milk. They mostly used the Elk Grove, but that was very nice. They sent the whole thing, I'll pass it on the board. But, it made you feel good. Remember, that money came because of a data center. The data center paid us almost $3 million in permit fees. The board decided to give that back to the community. And that's what it cost us to do these cards, $3 million. So, this is a person that did exactly what we hoped they would, and it was nice to get it. So, Jeff, let you start and pass forth. So, that was very nice. Also, I hope everyone saw the last newsletter we got. It was sent out in September, and we talked about in 10 years, just the last 10 years, what we did in biking and walking improvements here in Elk Grove, the whole center. You don't realize, Maggie especially, I know you're very instrumental in a lot of this work. It's amazing what we've done to help people biking, walking, jogging, all that. Millions of dollars, millions of dollars, we spent. We got a lot more coming up that's in here. That was a nice, if people didn't see it, they'd go online, and it's impressive all we've done. Chief Dorn, I'm almost done. Chief Dorn, I want to congratulate your department. We are not known for a town with a lot of restaurants, and definitely one that has no bars. We don't allow bars in Elk Grove. We replace people, we don't really have that like Schaumburg has, Rosemont has. But, get this. In 2024, Elk Grove Police Department issued 122 DUI arrests, which, believe it or not, ranked us 27th in the whole state. And think about it, there's what, a couple thousand towns in it? I can't remember. There's a lot of towns in the State of Illinois. And to be ranked 27th, when we really don't have a lot of places like that in the village. That means our officers are on the ball, watching things, paying attention. Because maybe people don't drink at Elk Grove, they travel throughout Grove. And our officers, so chief, pass on your officers. Way to go. That was impressive, when I saw that, that that was done that way. Another thing, chief, tonight. Anyone saw the paper? We had three arrests made recently for three people on attempted murder charges. The shooting occurred almost a year ago. Our officers worked for almost an entire year, tracking, following up, getting subpoenas to track things. Officers knew pretty quickly who they thought were the three, am I correct, chief? And they just had to wait to get their evidence in the background, monitor and all that. But, it shows in Elk Grove, we don't quit. Officers do a phenomenal job. And they stayed with it, and they got all three of them. One juvenile and two adults. And they were local, Displanes, Elk Grove, one Elk Grove and one Displanes, can't remember the other.
I think one incorporated one.
One Elk Grove. So, two officers, kudos for sticking together on that and getting it done. So, another good job, appreciate it. Okay, that pays off the mayor's report, except now it's Sister City.
Wow.
So, not bad, huh?
Can they come every week?
Don't egg them on, it's not funny. Schmidt, wanna come on down with me, buddy? Okay, as I said earlier, today, we're having our good friends and neighbors from Sicily and our friends from Mexico here to visit with Elk Grove. And Steve Schmidt, trustee Schmidt, is our lead liaison with the Sister City groups and all that. So, Steve, why don't you take it over from here?
Okay, tonight, we're here to celebrate our 25th anniversary with our Sister City, Termini Maresi Sicily. And the band that you heard came from Sicily, the Otami, Otoni Anamati Band. They were down in the Columbus State Parade yesterday, they were a big hit. And we were very happy that they were staying here, they're leaving tomorrow. But, they came to the board meeting to do that song special for us, and I said, "We appreciate that." As I said, this is our 25th anniversary, and in the 25 years, we've done a lot.
Before that.
Yes.
That was Mayor Purpy.
Purpy, yeah.
And I signing down.
In 2000, and actually, in 2000, Mayor Purpy and a delegation came. I believe Luigi was with them when they came. And right here, they signed the original agreement. In fact, if you go to the library, there's a picture of our mayor and Mayor Purpy with the, when the night that they signed the agreement, we have a display that's being displayed during the month of October at the library, and you can see that picture with both of you. So, it started in 2000. And they came here, and we were gonna go in 2001 to visit them for the first time, but 9/11 hit unfortunately, so we went in 2002. And in over the, over the 25 years, we had five official delegation trips, where village officials, both elected and department heads, visited Sicily to learn and exchange ideas on better government. For the past 10 years, we've had a delegation from Termini Maresi come to Elk Grove in October and participate in the annual Chicago Columbus State Parade, which we did again yesterday. And it was a great time, and the band was a hit for the parade, and we had a very good time down at the Chicago Parade yesterday. We also have Election Brothers Hospital here. We've had three doctors exchanges with doctors from Election Brothers and the Poli Clinical Hospital in Palermo, which is associated with the university. And we are working on a fourth exchange with doctors from Election Brothers as we speak. Maria Gulo and members of our Sister Cities, I know Ellen Peacock is here, she's worked on this too. They worked on six tourism trips for adults to go to Sicily. We just had a trip there early this year. We had 44 people participate in our Sister Cities adult trip. So far, about 240 tourists have experienced through our tourism trip the sights and culture of Sicily. And finally, we have our student exchange program. We are starting, we have done 14 student exchanges with Elk Grove High School and the Licio Genanasi Gregorio School and High School in Termini Maresi. And so far, we've had 340 students participate in this program. Students at Elk Grove High School and students from Termini Maresi. They get to go over there, first, the students come here for the Thanksgiving holiday. They get to experience a national holiday that they don't experience in Sicily, American holiday. Then, our students go there in March, and they live with their families over there, and they visit their high school. And we're proud to announce that we're working on our 15th exchange, and next month, we're gonna have 14 students coming here again from Sicily. And we can't do this without to help in the cooperation of our village, the village board, the high school, Principal Kelly, the students over, the students at the school that participate, the teachers over there that participate, and staff at Elk Grove High School. So, we're really proud of the things we've done in the last 25 years. We've done a lot, and we just appreciate the cooperation of everybody here on this end, and of course, the cooperation and the counterpart of our people from Termini, helping us to make this a successful exchange and a successful program.
And we had a marriage come out of this student exchange.
We've had a stu, we've had two marriages come out of a student exchange. And one of them involved our mayor, go ahead, do you wanna say it?
Yeah, my daughter went over there when she was a senior in high school, and one of the boys from Elk Grove High School, one of her classmates, went over there, and they started dating after they came back from the trip to Italy. And now, they're married and have one of my grandkids. So, a marriage came out of the Sister City group. They would never have been together otherwise.
That's right. We had a second marriage, again with students from Elk Grove who got to know each other. And there were, they had a marriage, and we had a third marriage. A third, my wife and I. We met through the Sister Cities program. And at the 10th anniversary in Termini, I was still the police chief. I was in full uniform, and we had a speech with Luigi. And I got down on my knees, and I proposed, there were about 150 people there, and they went wild. So, we've been married for 12 years, and in 12 years, I've gotten older.
She said yes.
Yes, she said yes. In the 12 years, I've gotten older, but she's gotten more beautiful, so thank you, Cindy. So, we have some guests here. We have the chairman of the Sister Cities program, Luigi Candiotto, and our chairman, Giovanni Gulo, he's sitting over there. We have the presidents of the two organizations. I'm gonna make sure I get these names right, okay? We have, where are the names here? Mariana Mirto and her husband Salvatore. She's the president of Sister Cities in Termini Maresi. I'm the president here in Elk Grove. We also have Helen Peacock, who's our secretary from Sister Cities. We have my wife Cindy, the treasurer. Maria Gulo, who's a director. And I'll be honest with you, without this program, without the Gulos, this program never would start. This program started in 2000, when Mr. Gulo took Pat Feiter over to Sicily, and he learned, he heard about the Sister Cities program. And he said, you know, "We should do this." And Pat came back, he was very excited about it, and the rest is history, 25 years. We also have other representatives here from Sisters, from our Sister Cities. We have, let's see, who do I, Francesco and Marco Oliveria. Francesco is a director. And I think I got all of them here from Sicily, did I miss any? Oh, Vincenzo, I forgot Vincenzo. He's a, he's a director of Sister Cities, and he's their, he's the emo. He's the emo of Termini Maresi. He's their photographer, official photographer. And we also have our friends from Mexico. They, they are also a sister city with Termini Maresi, and they came here to celebrate with us too on this, on this occasion. So, we have Salo, Verrientos. We have, let me make sure I get all these right now. I'm sorry if I mispronounce your names, but I'm not good on this. Jose, Jose Olivio Jimenez. Okay. Madila Luz Orozco Cezeros. Okay. Marcelina Sanchez. Astrid Sanchez. And is Benito here? Benito's where? Emmanuel, oh yeah, Manuel, okay. So, they're here too, they're celebrating with us, and they participated in the Columbus State Parade. The Columbus State Parade in Chicago really isn't just about Columbus. It's about, it's a multicultural, we have many different countries in the parade in downtown Chicago yesterday, as in past parades. So, we appreciate our friends from Mexico coming here. So, those are the ones who are here.
Can you do the proclamation first?
Yeah, you do the proclamation.
Who do you want to come down for that?
Luigi.
Luigi, come on down.
Luigi and Mariana, come on. They're the two top dogs.
And figure out how we're gonna do that. Yeah. That race card, we'll go there. Luigi, my friend, Garcia. Before I have you say a few words, I got a proclamation I'd like to read. Are you gonna interpret? Okay. Elk Grove Village Proclamation in recognition of Italian-American Heritage and Culture Month, October 2025. Okay, we'll do it together.
Allora, qui, okay. La proclamazione del Villaggio di Elk Grove Village in riconoscenza delle mese e cultura italoeamericano ottobre 2025.
Whereas Italian-American Heritage and Culture Month is celebrated nationwide during the month of October in honor of more than 26 million Italian-American citizens living in the United States.
Allora, qui, diciamo la cultura si italoeamericana, questo è il mese dove si celebra dappertutto nel mondo durante questo mese di ottobre in onore di più di 26 milioni di italoeamericani cittadini che vivono negli Stati Uniti.
Whereas Italian-American Heritage Month was created in 1989 and was proclaimed by President George Bush and Congress of the US to honor the achievements and contributions of Italian immigrants and their descendants living in the United States, particularly in the arts, science, and culture.
Allora, questo, diciamo questa tradizione di celebrare questo mese nelle, diciamo le tradizioni e l'eredità è iniziato nel 1989 è stato proclamato dal presidente George Bush e il Congresso per onorare, onorare, diciamo tutte le, il contributo, tutti gli sforzi che hanno fatto gli immigrati italiani, i nostri e i loro discendenti che vivono qui negli Stati Uniti, in particolare nei settori dell'arte, della scienza e della cultura.
Whereas during Italian Heritage, American Heritage and Culture Month, we recognize the rich heritage of Americans of Italian descent and celebrate their measurable impacts on our nation and community.
E durante questo mese noi riconosciamo la ricchezza trasmessa dai discendenti italoeamericani per celebrare il loro impatto che è incomparabile che hanno dato alla nostra nazione e alla nostra comunità.
Whereas the Village of Elk Grove Village supports our residents, business owners, neighbors, and visitors in our community that are Italian immigrants or of Italian descent, and recognizes their irreplaceable contributions to our village.
E noi, il villaggio di Elk Grove Village diamo supporto ai residenti, ai proprietari di attività, ai residenti, ai vicini, ai visitatori della nostra comunità che sono immigrati italiani o di discendenza italiana. E riconosciamo il loro contributo preziosissimo al nostro villaggio.
And whereas anyone interested in learning about the heritage and contributions of those celebrating Italian-American Heritage Month should visit the National Italian American Foundation's website at www.niaf.org.
Chiunque sia interessato a imparare, sapere di più, a imparare di più sulla nostra cultura e i contributi che abbiamo, e i contributi di quelli che celebriamo il mese italoeamericano dovrebbero visitare il National Italian American Foundation al sito niaf.org.
Now, therefore, I, Mayor Craig B. Johnson, and the Board of Trustees of the Village of Elk Grove Village and the Council of Cook and DuPage, Illinois, do hereby proclaim the month of October Italian Heritage and Culture Month.
E io, sindaco Craig B. Johnson, è il consiglio d'amministrazione qui di Elk Grove Village e le contende di Cook e DuPage dello stato dell'Illinois. Qui proclamo il mese di ottobre, il mese della cultura e dell'eredita italiana.
Good? Okay. Wait, did you wanna say something?
E allora, veramente questa nostra delegazione sta rimanendo stupita di questa splendida accoglienza che il sindaco Johnson e tutto il board del Elk Grove Village sta tributando alla delegazione siciliana. È il riconoscimento importantissimo legato proprio alla cultura e alla tradizione dell'Italia che storicamente ha trovato in America, mandando i suoi figli qua a scoprire una nuova terra e un futuro per chi si trovava in situazioni di difficoltà e che qua ha avuto la possibilità di realizzare i suoi sogni.
We gotta keep you, I don't wanna miss it. Because everything you say is very important. So, I am very, very delighted, surprised of our, the way you have walked on as, this delegation really surprised me. We felt the, the, it's very heartfelt. And you recognizing the immigrants that came here to give a better future for their families and stuff. It's very heartfelt. And then, I had to stop her, I'm sorry.
E allora, qua io sono la presidente dell'Associazione Nazionale Città Gemelle di Termini Maresi. E qua c'è il chairman Luigi Candiotto. Siamo qua in rappresentanza di questa realtà che è in stretto collegamento con la Sister Cities di Elk Grove Village. E siamo in simbiosi e cerchiamo di supportare i gemellaggi, gli scambi, perché crediamo nella capacità di questi scambi, di creare quei legami per vincere tutte le visioni che possono allontanare. Quindi, sono per l'inclusione, per l'integrazione, per la pace nel mondo. Devono essere un esempio per tutte le comunità.
I am the president of the Termini Maresi Exchange Program, and I'm here with Luigi, who is the chairman. We are here to represent this exchanges that should live in symbiosis because we support the progress, the benefits of these exchange programs. We believe that- We believe that together with this inclusiveness, we can have peace, we can have other benefits. They are all positive.
Quindi soltanto dire grazie, sempre grazie a tutti e speriamo di ripetere queste esperienze. Ora Luigi parlerà degli scambi che ci sono con gli studenti di Termine Merese e gli studenti di Elk Grove.
I just wanted to say thank you, thank you for these exchanges. And now Mr. Luigi is going to talk about the student exchange program.
Sarò breve.
I'll be short.
Thank you. This is a moment very, very important. I don't speak English.
You do, you do.
Because, sorry for my language. Thank you, sindaco mayor Greg, thank you. Thank you Steve, my president, Italian Sister City. And thank you Gula family, Maria, Giovanni, Mariana. They are, they, me, sono stati colori quali hanno fatto sì che nascesse il gemellaggio tra Termine Merese e Elk Grove Village.
The Gula families are the founders. They are the ones who made this possible, of this exchange program.
And Termine and Elk Grove Village are two communities that have the, hanno delle idee dei progetti comuni.
They have ideas, they have projects in common.
Uno tra i più importanti.
One of the major ones.
Lo scambio degli studenti dei licei di Termine e di Elk Grove Village.
One of the major programs is the exchange, the student exchange program among Elk Grove Village High School and the High School of Termine Merese.
È importante che i giovani delle due comunità, delle due nazioni si conoscano. Vivono anche brevissimi momenti assieme per comprendere quello che serve per dare quell'unione, quell'amore che generano la pace nel mondo e tra le nazioni di tutto il mondo.
It is important that the young generation know each other. They understand the union and the love among the generations because it generates the love and the peace around the world.
Thank you, grazie, e buon Columbus Day.
And happy Columbus Day.
We have some gifts that we want to pass out to the, to the members of the Sister Cities Program in Termine. But I also wanted to introduce Mr. Giovanni Gulli, or he is the man that started this whole thing. And this program would not go on without the super, super, super support of the Gula family, both Giovanni and Maria and Mariana, who's not here tonight. But we thank you from the bottom of our heart for all the work you have done to make this a successful program for 25 years. And let's see what happens in the next 25 years, you know? Okay, so why don't you come on up here and we'll, you want to pass out these gifts? All right, we have some gifts here, first of all, to your counterpart Luigi. Do you want to give that to Luigi?
Sure.
Yeah, right there. I'll give this to my counterpart, the president, Mariana, that's for you.
Thank you, thank you.
And we also have gifts here for Francesco, you want to come up here, Francesco? And Vincenzo, where are you? Come on, we're taking pictures for a minute, come on up. The mayor has some other gifts and for the rest of the people here, we have, the village has some party gifts for you on the way out. They will give them to you on the way out, okay?
And I'm gonna give, I'm gonna give.
Hold on, hold on.
You know, we have a race car. And for our 70th anniversary, we redid our race car. It's not the same, so we got little ones here, I got a bag here of them for you. Have one, make sure the band members get them too. And then we gotta make sure we give you some chocolates. So make sure you give them out to the band and everyone else. So we got you covered with village chocolates, the race car. Luigi, it's your job.
Thank you.
But you all get, even our friends from Mexico, everyone, okay? Thank you, my friend, thank you. So we're good, we're good?
Yep.
Now, my understanding is you're all gonna be going to Rivers Casino now? That's, am I right? Everyone's going to Rivers? So we got you done quickly. Bet on seven, you never lose. So remember that. Thank you very much, God bless, thank you.
Sister City is beautiful, we do it all over the world.
And we'll see you all Friday.
And we do Sicily, not just to Termine, we go Cacomo, Palermo, Torno, Torno. Everybody's love for everyone, okay?
And we'll see, and we'll see everyone on Friday.
And I love Mexico too.
Yeah, we got them, we got covered. You're all good, so thank you folks. Yeah, you want to do a quick, trustees, come on down, we're gonna do a quick group picture down here.
Can we just stand back here?
Everyone, come on.
Hey Craig, is it better if we stand behind them? Well, I'm just saying, because you're not gonna fit everybody. It'd probably be, that's what I mean, if we do a roll here, George, you guys stand up with them. Luigi, how are you? Man, this guy's been around a lot of times. Remember Jay Lee?
I would have answered. I would, I would have answered.
Now this is the picture that everybody's gonna be.
Yeah, they're gonna super go right, right past them.
Oh sure, now you pick the tallest guy.
No, you're good, no, no, you're fine.
That's okay.
We're fine. Joe, what? Why did it keep, it's like a wandering jack. You want us to come down? All right, we gotta go down. Emo says go down.
Oh, forget about it.
Closer? I see what we paid Emo on that bill, we gotta make sure we get it all yeah.
Wait a minute, where did you get here? Ah, not much longer.
Yeah, which one? I heard that, yeah, yeah, it was awesome, it was good, yeah. The autotest teacher or the? Yeah, 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 he loves it, yeah.
I'll see you on Friday.
By the way, by the way, Joe, how do I get the speakers turning around at the high school? My God, Thursday night, I was watching TV and Ken Grant was sitting next to me so loud.
Oh, yeah.
At my house, I'm not kidding you. I was like, what the heck?
We had that playoff game.
I know, but it's like, you know.
I was on Friday.
No, Thursday was the girls', was the girls', and they lost. But.
So that was a bad one?
No. It was very loud, and I'm like, my wife's walking around, who are you talking to? I go, Ken Grant, but he's at the high school. No, it's good. And again, it's eight o'clock, it's no big deal, but I'm like, damn, that is very loud. More pitchers, are we supposed to be in here? That's still not paying my water bill.
She said she was hoping for residual.
All right, I'll give her some money after the things that work. No, of course, we're live. Bueno, is that right? Thank you. That sounds like get out of here. To me, adios is get out.
Yes.
So much for the plan. What about their parting gifts?
Should we get the mushroom taken?
Thank you.
Bye bye, see you Friday. Friday. Luigi, see you Friday.
Karaoke.
Karaoke, mate.
I forgot about that one.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Please move on now to trustee's report, we'll start with trustee Bush.
Mayor, you'll be happy after the year of not having the cereal bowl.
Oh my goodness.
There it is. Yay!
Were you sitting on there?
That's always under Georgia's seats.
That's why he's smiling.
Well, it is a bedpan, you're right, it is, okay.
Wow, congrats.
Yeah, 4,900.
Thirty-five boxes of cereal.
That's a record, isn't it?
Yeah, that was the year before Meadows had done, well, yeah, the year before Meadows had 3,813, we had 3,237. So we went from 3,200 to 4,900, so.
Way to go.
Um, yeah, and the community, you know, came up huge. Brian, you guys collected at public, we had so many places that collected. I got a call, I, we had already had the numbers and I got text messages like, hey, we still have boxes of cereal at our place. So I think we might be closer to 5,000 when they all add it up, because I was like, I totally forgot. But yeah, the village came through, we picked up 1,500 boxes on our Sunday tour, which was great. And I think Paul Kelly was shocked. I didn't even, I told nobody the number we had, because I, I think there's some moles that were out there the year before and a Robbie Gold checkbook and we came back and we took care of business, so.
It's gonna help a lot of people, that's a big thing.
It is, yeah, so nine, 9,000, they said they were just the, you know, the eight, or the 7,000 from the year before, they were just wrapping that up now. So yeah, 1,100 families a month.
That's great, you did a great job, Joe.
Thank you, thank you, thank you for everyone that participated. And then on that same note, the Community Character Coalition is doing a drive Saturday, the 25th, outside of Jewel. So if you're coming into shop, we usually hand out a flyer and if you want to buy something extra and give it to the pantry, usually this is a toiletry drive. It does not have to come from Jewel, if you want to donate something and just drop it off either at Jewel that day or at the township, we were welcome, and that's hosted with the CCC. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Trustee Miller.
No report.
Trustee Frankie.
No report.
Trustee Schmidt.
Just have one item, we were supposed to have a parole hearing for Patty Colombo earlier this month and it was postponed until January 15th, 2026. So if anybody still wants to submit letters, you could submit them to the village or directly to the parole board, information is in the current issue of the, or the past issue of the Villager and you can get that online also. So we'll see what happens in January. That concludes my report.
Thank you, trustee Jerish.
I had the pleasure of attending the Acne Industries Manufacturing Day on October 3rd. And what a great day it was where the company showcased their abilities for CNC-type manufacturing. What was really cool is to see one of the large parts that they were creating go into a engine, a diesel engine, which will be used as a backup generator at our data centers. So a part made in Elk Grove going into another machine, which will now live in Elk Grove, it's kind of cool. I also wanted to present to you, Mayor, a plaque that they made for us. And last Farmer's Market Day is October 25th. So come on out and support the farmer's market on Saturday from 9 to 1 at Christus Victor Lutheran Church. And last but not least, fire, our fire department hosted an outstanding open house this past Saturday. And thank you to all who set it up and participated. It was a great day for families and the community. That concludes my report.
Thank you, trustee Laskin.
No report.
Move on now to county's payable warrant, 1st September 30th, 2025.
I make a motion, we pay the county's payable warrant for September 30th, 2025
Second?
We have a motion by trustee Jeff, or Jeffrey Charles Frankie, second by trustee Bush. Jen, can you call the roll, please?
Trustee Bush?
Aye.
Trustee Frankie?
Aye.
Trustee Jerish?
Aye.
Trustee Laskin?
Aye.
Trustee Miller?
Aye.
Trustee Schmidt?
Aye.
Motion passed 6-0, the county's payable warrant for October 14th, 2025.
I make a motion that we pay the county's payable warrant for October 14th, 2025 for $821,000. I make a motion that we pay the county's payable warrant for October fourteenth, twenty twenty-five for eight hundred and twenty-one thousand, six hun- six hundred and twenty-four dollars and forty-three cents.
Second?
We have a motion by trustee Frankie, second by trustee Miller, without objection, recorded votes previously demonstrated, six to nothing. We have consent agenda items, Mr. Knickerbocker, for the last time, A as in...
I have no clue.
You never have.
Why would I start now?
That wouldn't stop us from having your work for us.
A as in, how about A?
Okay, through J as in...
J?
Very good. So we have consent agenda items, A as in A, through J as in J, I need a motion.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion by trustee Miller, second by trustee Laskin, any board members of staff have any questions, comment on consent agenda. Anybody in the audience on the consent agenda? Seeing none, hearing none, without objection, recorded votes previously demonstrated, six to nothing. Last consent agenda item, Mr. Knickerbocker, after fifty-four years. Think of the thousands of consent agenda items.
And before that, we didn't have consent agenda, just think how long the meetings lasted.
Well, Wendy would have been in heaven.
Oh, oh.
Okay, we move on now, there's no items on the regular agenda, plant commission or zoning board's appeal, Mr. Roan?
No items.
Uh, recycling waste committee, trustee Frankie.
Uh, I will be announcing at the next board meeting that we will be holding a recycling and waste committee meeting, but I'll have more information at the next board meeting.
Very good, judiciary planning zoning committee, trustee Bush.
No report.
Capital improvements committee, trustee Schmidt, no report. Cable television committee, trustee Laskin.
No report.
Youth committee, trustee Bush.
No report.
Information, I will skip that one.
Something to say.
Of course you do.
She did skip her trustee's report, so you can give her the...
Okay, information committee, trustee Miller.
Please, um, look forward to the upcoming newsletter, uh, the Villager, because there will be trick-or-treat information in there. Um, and also a next neighborhood watch meeting, which is October thirtieth, seven PM, at the village hall. So please, look, there's some very good information coming up about trick-or-treating. That concludes my report.
And we are gonna do the signs again.
Yes, the red and green.
Green sign, if you want trick-or-treaters, red sign if you don't want them.
Correct.
And take it from a sixty-five-year participant, I love the signs.
I do too.
Best thing ever to happen.
Yep.
We don't bother people, we get more candy, because as my grandkids will tell you, time is candy and candy is time, so.
Now, people have been asking, it's a Friday night.
It is a Friday night.
The hours are the same, so eight o'clock.
Three to eight o'clock.
Okay.
Yep, then next Saturday and Sunday, the two years afterwards. So these are three prime years for us trick-or-treaters. We love it. Yes. I'm serious, that's what we say, time is candy, candy is time. My kids, all grandkids all know it by heart. We know, Grandpa, we're going, our legs are shorter than yours, we're trying to keep up. Uh, business leaders forum, trustee Schmidt.
No report.
Health and Community Services, trustee Jerish.
No report.
Personnel Committee, trustee Schmidt.
No report.
No report on the airport, I already talked about the parade. Mr. Knickerbocker, I don't have a Midsummer Classic Series lineup yet.
This is good.
You can't...
Nothing for me to memorize.
Nothing to have to know or anything.
That's new.
You gonna miss all the concerts?
I'll probably come back.
Will you be around for some?
Sure.
Make sure you sit with us.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Let's get security.
For me or for you?
To protect me from you.
Oh.
Special Events Committee, the next event would be our tree lighting, November twenty-eighth, and we got the box tops playing. We, oh, and, as I gave out, I said, a new race car will make its, uh, debut at the tree lighting. He'll lead Santa, the race car will lead Santa into the tree lighting. So everyone wants to see the new race car, Elk Grove, it's a NASCAR race car, it's an official race car from NASCAR, and NASCAR race car.
NASCAR race car, yeah.
So, um, we're rolling out for our seventieth anniversary, it's our seventieth anniversary model. It's actually kind of cool, hang on real quick, Channel Six. Let me get a, first vision of it. Hang on, Georgie.
Childproof, you may not get it.
To make it a dope proof. So Channel Six, if you can zoom in, there it is, it's our green and white color, number fifty-six. The year the village was founded, nineteen fifty-six, car's number fifty-six, it's the makers' one, a race car, and we come by on the tree lighting. So if you want a chance to get a picture with it, to see it, come on by that day, it'll be there, besides Santa, besides Storytime, we're gonna have Storytime again from four to five down in Room E, we're gonna have, uh, the train, a little train for the kids, gonna be going, I think, from four to five-thirty. Um, concert starts at four-thirty, uh, we're gonna, cookies.
Hot chocolate.
Hot chocolate, uh, cider. Um, Mr. Knickerbocker will be out back with a fifth, he's wanting a quick swig, and, um, it'll all be a good time, so, uh...
Sounds good to me.
So we'll do that, no report on the liquor commission, report from village manager?
No, no report.
Nope.
Village clerk?
No report.
Okay, now, what I'm, check? As usual, there's nothing under Mr. Knickerbocker, someday I want to hear what I've been joking about there for twenty-eight years, but I won't say. Um, before we finish up, Mr. Knickerbocker, I'm gonna jump a little bit, so if people, we have someone in the audience wants to address us, so we'll do that first. So, um, Kathy, you want to talk to us, come on down. I know of all meanings to pick was one that was so long, so I'm gonna make it up to you, I'm gonna give you one of our official race cars, so, chief? You want choc-? Chief, grab her a chocolate, way back too.
I think you gave them all away.
No, no, we got a box, we'll get you some chocolates too. Tap on the end of it.
Yeah, it's on.
It's good.
You're good.
You're good.
Okay. Okay, she's gonna bring you the race car and some chocolates. We made up for that, Kathy, there you go.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay. You want to talk to us about Oakton?
I want to talk to you about the, um, article in the Villager about multi-purpose lanes on Oakton. And I'd like a definition of multi-use.
Sure. Who wants to, would that be, uh, Ken Jay? All right, Brian, Brian, you wanna explain what's, she's talking about, we're gonna be doing a major road project on Oakton from Orange Heights Road down to Shadywood, and it's gonna redesign it some to make it better for the residents that live there and people that may traverse it. So, Brian, go ahead.
Um, I'll tell you, the path is for bikers, walkers, runners, it's a larger distance, uh, makes it a little bit easier for everybody to pass through.
Will it be restricted to walkers and bikers? Right now, we're using it as a parking lane, and it's wonderful.
She's talking about on Oakton?
Oh, okay.
On Oakton.
You're talking about the one we're gonna put up on, by the sidewalk?
Yeah.
This is gonna go along by the sidewalk. We're gonna make the sidewalk wider. Go ahead.
So, the multi-use path is a widened sidewalk, um, you're concerned about parking on the street, what they're gonna do at the corners is bump out the street to better delineate the parking area, so people don't use it as a two-way street, but you're still gonna have parking in front of your home.
Okay, so the sidewalk is gonna be wider?
Yes, the side will be widened toward, toward the street, not toward your house.
Okay.
But they allow, because we're connecting all those, um, different trails that I talked about earlier in newsletter.
Right.
All the trails we've done is gonna connect, because Oakton goes right into the woods right there at the light.
Yes.
So they'll make it available for people to use that path, and they'll take it down to Oakton, and then we go all the way down past Bussey to, uh, by the towway, and that connects into another path in another town.
Correct.
So we're trying to become more interconnected, but that path is not for cars, it's for bikers, joggers, walkers, you know, those people use it for. Then what Matt talks about is at the corners, there's gonna be a curb bump out. So, that stops people from driving two-lane wide down Oakton, and you're trying to park on Oakton, so it's gonna help designate that your one lane in front of your house is for parking. Oakton basically becomes just a two-lane road, one each direction.
Alright, now you're going to extend this, widen the sidewalk, am I going to lose parking that I use at the base of my driveway?
No, because you have a sidewalk going through your driveway now, so instead of a five-foot-wide driveway sidewalk, you may have an eight-foot, eight-foot wide.
So that will take from my parking though?
No, you can still park on it, you park over your sidewalk now.
No, I don't.
Oh, you don't?
That's against the law.
No, no.
No, well...
I do not park over my sidewalk.
You park closer to your house, right?
Yes.
Well, this is going towards the street, so it's not going towards your house.
But I have one parking by my garage, and then I have a double parking on, below, at the curb level.
Right. You can still park, Kathy, you can still park, we allow you to park over the sidewalk in Elk Grove. And the reason we do that is so many homes have one-car garages.
Right.
There's no way they could survive if they couldn't park there, so you can still park there, you're fine.
Okay.
Nothing changed, just the sidewalk could be eight feet wide instead of five feet wide.
Alright, but it will be the sidewalk, not the street.
Not the street, no.
Okay, because we have the parking lane now.
Right.
Which we love.
Yep.
But it's also a hazard for many people because of the way people drive. As I'm making a left-hand turn into my driveway, they are passing me through the parking lanes.
Well, that's why what we're gonna do is... Hang on. This is Oakton, going across, we're gonna bump out the curbs.
Do you know how old I am? I can't see that.
Well, no.
Okay, we're gonna bump out at the corners, like at, at Evergreen, at Ridgewood, at Woodcrest, and while, we're gonna bump the corners out, am I correct? We'll bump the corners out of the curb, so right now, they can drive two cars wide on both sides of Oakton.
Right.
With the curbs bumped out, they can't do that, because we run it over curbs and grass.
So you will restrict it to one lane each way?
You got it, it'll be one-lane road, and that way you'll always have a parking lane in front of your house.
Can you explain that more in the next Villager?
Yes, we'll put diagrams...
Put a diagram out or a drawing?
Better drawing.
We'll make sure we put drawings in to show it, but figure this, at Wildwood, Woodcrest, Evergreen, Ridgewood, and Forest, you're gonna have bump outs, because I know you're on that side of the street.
Right.
No, they're not gonna be going in and out, no, they'll go to that one lane that's open, and only cars who are gonna be parked will be pulling up or pulling the driveways. You have nothing to worry about, it's gonna make it safer for you, it's gonna make it easier for you to park, and it's gonna allow people to transbi- transfer by without having to go on the street, they can go on the sidewalks.
Good, okay, thank you.
You're good?
I'm good.
Okay, thank you, Kathy.
Good night.
Take care. Anybody else here tonight wants to address us before we finish up? Helen, we're gonna see you soon, Helen, I'm gonna get you, don't leave, I'm gonna get you a race car to give to the boss, okay? You have one of the very first ones. So, no one else, folks, you here, anything? We're good? Everyone? Okay, um, George, why don't you come down here with me?
I'm just looking at your picture.
Come on down here with me.
Oh, sorry, am I blocking you? Trying to keep you here.
Okay. When George first started for the village, I was in sixth grade.
Probably got a lot of trouble too, but...
Yeah, I did, I can guarantee you that. Um, so, tonight, after fifty-four years, this is George's last meeting. To say George is an institution here in the village would be understating it, and, um, I know, uh, Mrs. Johnson being the biggest critic, um, people say, geez, Mayor, keep teasing George, keep joking George is, and I only do that because George is my best friend. And I love George like family, and, uh, I'll prove it to you. So, um, for us older people, we remember a guy named Johnny Carson. Johnny Carson was the king of late-night TV, now you got, what guys out there, Fallon and Kimball, those guys are jokes compared to the old timers, where they did it. But Johnny Carson always had a sidekick, Ed McMahon. And Johnny would have fun with Ed McMahon for all those decades, teasing him, making jokes and stuff.
You are right, sir.
Yep, see? And I tell people, he's, he's my Ed McMahon, he's our guy. But I'll tell you this, all joking aside, you notice tonight, I made almost no jokes tonight, in here.
Oh, yeah, in here.
In here, upstairs we had a lot.
Yeah, we were upstairs for a while.
But, this village is definitely better off and been better served because of you, George, over all these years. And I've been mayor now almost twenty-nine years, he is my consigliere, he is my confidant, he's a man I would always ask to go to if I had a problem, had issues, had concerns. And I gotta tell you something, first off, George knows every human being on this earth. I could walk in and say, George, you know, I had a, my right tire had a valve that popped out, you know, Craig, I went to school with a guy that invented that valve, hang on, he'd call up, next thing I know, I'm talking to the guy.
An old guy, but...
Yeah, but he knew everyone, and everyone knew George. George is a prosecutor, Rolling Meadows Courthouse all these years, the judge is over there, and judges are not easy people to work with. The judges over there revere and love this guy. He's the guy, he's the only guy, only attorney throughout the whole probably world, he walks back in the judge's office, just walks right in. Didn't have to ask if they're in, ask for appointment, no, George is, George is, and the chief judge, now Judge Marisi, but before that, you had Judge Erso, and other ones, Judge Mackey. George, you can walk in their office anytime you want to, no one else can do it, and the lawyers were jealous, not George, he'd just walk in. That's because everyone appreciated him, loved him, and knew. George is very knowledgeable too. He does his homework, everything, where you see over the years, we joke about, I ask what school someone goes to, and we have a thing with George about the mascot for the school. I gave George a book about that thick one year for Christmas of all the mascots, he memorized them all. Just so he could be ready at board meetings, and man, you pulled off somebody I would never have thought in a million years, you know, he'd pull them off. So, you know, that's the intelligence this guy has, he is smart, he is good. But, I gotta tell you something. I, I will never have the ability to work with someone like him again. And like I said to you before, I wrote you tonight, you made me a better person, George, by being with you all these years. And joking aside, if I didn't care about you and you weren't my right arm, I would not have made those jokes. And it's because I do care about you.
I know that.
And being an old history teacher, I now know what Robert E. Lee said when Stonewall Jackson was killed in battle, he said, I lost my right arm. Well, tonight, I'm losing my right arm, and I'm gonna miss you, the village is gonna miss you, and it's not gonna be easy, but we're gonna never forget the fun times we had, the adventures we went on. We've gone on adventures, only we did.
I'm the ma- 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 mayor.
Before, before I finish up here, we got a proclamation for you tonight, George. So... A proclamation honoring George Knickerbocker, village attorney and village prosecutor on his retirement of fifty-four years of service. Whereas George Knickerbocker has served with dedication, integrity, and unwavering commitment as legal counsel to the Village of Elk Grove Village for more than five decades. And whereas George Knickerbocker began serving the village on October twenty-sixth, nineteen seventy-one, and for over fifty years provided wise legal counsel, sound judgment, and tireless advocacy in support of the village interests and well-being of its residents. And whereas, throughout his distinguished tenure, George Knickerbocker has contributed significantly to development, governance, and legal integrity of the village, guiding the administration, boards, and commissions through complex legal matters, especially the ones I'd bring up here.
Well, many.
George, final legal way to do this, okay, let me see.
We, yes, several of those.
We had quite a few of those. Remember, uh, oh, what's his name, hit a court of court and stand up and defend that one, uh, who was, uh, oh, God, uh, who are the other attorney, uh, what's his name? I'm trying to think of it.
Oh, Bill thing?
Bill, no, no, um, oh, God. Zamarin. Thank you.
Oh, Zamarin, thank you.
Poor Zamarin, standing in front of the district court, trying to say it with a straight face.
Couldn't.
Okay, where are the district here, George, I guess, um, I'm not sure where I left off. I did that one, okay.
Let me check.
Where is George Knickerbocker? George Knickerbocker's been instrumental in drafting ordinances overseeing land use and development issues, protecting the village legal standing, and fostering transparent, ethical, and that's a hard word to say with an attorney, ethical, but we tried.
Can't help yourself, can you?
No, I can't, in response to governance, whereas saving the mayor's ass more times than I can, no, that wasn't it.
Wow.
Whereas over the past fifty-four years, I should have said that word either, should I?
You're good, you're the mayor, you're the mayor.
George, the ma- ma- mayor, whereas George has faithfully, that's true, faithfully and dutifully served as village attorney and prosecutor during his tenure. George Knickerbocker worked with three mayors, only one that counted, uh, Zennick, uh, twenty-seven village trustees, four village managers, and authored three thousand one hundred and forty-nine ordinances. And whereas George Knickerbocker will retire on October twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five, and whereas the village is grateful for your commitment and service to the exceptional community, we offer him the best... to the exceptional community, we offer him the best of wishes on a long, healthy, happy retirement. Now therefore, I, Mayor Craig B. Johnson, and the Board of Trustees in the village of Elk Grove Village, and the counters of Cook and DePage, Illinois, do hereby proclaim, October 24th, you're getting a whole day. A whole day, you cannot be arrested in Elk Grove.
Ooh.
Normally I give it, at this time they have like four hours left. You get 24 hours.
This is good.
You're off the hook. Remember that, Chief. 24 hours. George Nekabacher Day here in Elk Grove, in the village of Elk Grove Village. As an expression of our gratitude, George Nekabacher is outstanding service over five decades at Elk Grove Village. Now, I'm not done yet, George. For the longest time, 29 years, this has always sat in front of me. And always, everyone said, what's LGK stand for? Lord, God, King? No. This truly stood for Lawyer George Nekabacher. So tonight, besides the proclamation, I am giving you my personal, well-used, well pounded, well beat up gavel. Because your name has actually been on there all these years. Because you truly were not only this village's, but my right-hand man. You never let me down. You always had the best interest at heart. And you're the one person I knew I could always turn to. So on behalf of the village, and particularly on me, my family, and everyone you've touched, we say thank you, and we say God bless you, George.
That's quite a gift. Thank you. The gift is incredible. What are you gonna do without your gavel?
I always told Matt tonight, then no one knew I was gonna do that. I said, Matt, you gotta get me a new gavel for this.
Yeah, no kidding, you can borrow mine.
You actually have a gavel to meet the outcome up here.
Oh, okay.
You got work to do, go ahead.
The mayor had told me before that he was gonna give me an opportunity to speak tonight, and I had quite a bit of time. So I wanted to think about it, and I wanted to prepare, because I wanted the words to be special. I wanted them to be important. So I did a review of speeches that had been made before the board in the past. And I wanted to learn from them, so that I was gonna say meaningful things. And I chose two of those speeches as models, which I would use tonight. And that was some informative, some retirement. But there was an informative speech by then Fire Lieutenant Greg Riddle, who spoke to the board on fire alarms, if you remember. And then there was a retirement speech by a former police chief and now trustee, Steve Schmidt. And I used his as a model as well. And in so doing, it was necessary for me to take some notes. If you, excuse me. Looking at that, there's no way that I can do that, because if, if I came up with that, it would, it would come off like a mayor's report on steroids. That's correct. If I don't get fired for that little remark on the mayor's report, as the mayor said, next year I will be celebrating my 54th year with giving legal services to the village. And trying to be somewhat humble, I believe it is kind of a remarkable accomplishment. But I'm not the only one, in my opinion, that has probably done that. Names like Louencel, Jack Siegel, and a name you're familiar with, Don Strino, have probably done the same. And in thinking of that, I looked at attributes that they possessed, which I thought was important, and that they were very dedicated to the communities that they represented. They're very intelligent, and they worked very hard. And then I wanted to compare them with my attributes. This incredible charm, and engaging personality. And I've never been really fond of hard work. So that was the difference. You know, it's obvious that I'm not gonna give a teary, sad, emotional farewell. However, there is a lot of emotion inside. And for those who know me, realize how much I care and how I feel about Elk Grove Village. And how I feel about the trustees I've worked with, both past and present. And how I've worked with the staff that I've worked with through the years. One staff member in particular, financially speaking. And, oh, yeah. How I feel about, it's a little windy here. If there's anyone who can talk about the village from its early stages until now, I think I'm a good candidate. And I say that because when I attended my first meeting in 1971, Elk Grove had just celebrated its 15th anniversary. Next year, Elk Grove will be celebrating its 70th anniversary. And I've been there all the time, inside, and I've known things. And when it started out, Elk Grove was a very small town, by the airport, blue collar, small homes, and not a very significant reputation in the beginning. But it had a certain foundation. And the foundation that I observed was the two Chucks, Chuck Willis, Chuck Zennick. And very determined, dedicated trustees, the Tostos, the Chernicks, the Vanderwheels. And they created a base for which the village started to grow. Can you use your water or something?
Mine's clean.
Yeah, I have mine over there, too.
Here, here, this one's.
It's good. It's good. But then, 28 and a half years ago, there was this young upstart. This guy that was a trustee for just one term, and then decided that he would run for mayor. He decided he would work hard, he would win the election, and he would change the world of Elk Grove Village. And he did. And if you think of what we have today, we've got low taxes. We had an international bike race with riders coming from the Tour de France. We have concerts for the residents with the Beach Boys. We have four departments in this, in this village that are all nationally accredited. That's amazing. And we also have given our residents four straight years of $200 gift certificates. What village does that? And I have heard, and people have said, that from time to time, this is the best village in the state. And I truly believe it, I live it, and I know it. And while he gets the support in doing these things from the trustees, the drive and the initiative for all that is on this man's shoulders. Oh, there it is. However, this night is not about him, it's about me. So let's get back to talking about me. I know I said that my attributes, my two attributes were this incredible charm and engaging personality. Well, it's kind of true, but there was one more thing. There's this motto, that I live with a creed, if you will, that from the very beginning, you work as hard as you can, every day. So that when this day comes, when it comes my retirement, I will want to be known, and I will be known for more than just a pretty face. So with that in mind, my final thoughts are Elk Grove Village, thank you for everything. Amen.
Okay, since George was the last item tonight, you notice I'm restraining, because there's a lot of things I'd love to say. But Ed's gonna go off on a shiny thing. You get to close the board meeting. So I'll get us there.
George, I got one question. Since you're free of crime on October 24th, what are you gonna do to the mayor's car?
Change the oil like I do every month.
Okay, so the tires are safe, all right.
No, no, we're good. Don't fill the wax, two coats.
Oh, sorry, sorry, I forgot, I forgot.
I tell you, that's more words, I think, you said tonight at a board meeting than I think you've ever said in my 28 and a half years here.
Well, you've never given me the opportunity.